We are live now.
Alright, everyone, thanks for coming. I call this meeting of Hamtramck City Council to order. Today is September 23rd, 2025, and it's 7:00 PM with administrative officer called the roles please. It's not the clerk today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alright, I will be doing a roll call. So with that said, Councilman Fari?
Present.
Councilman Musa? Councilman Sedman?
Present.
Councilman Nahmud?
Yes.
Councilman Sumei?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Present.
Alright, we have a corner.
Thank you. Please rise for the citizens. Thank you. Alright, do we have any community announcements? Mr.?
I do. It's a quick one. The Hamtramck Fire Department has an open house and touch truck event happening on Sunday, September 28th, 2025, from noon until 2:00 PM. Usually very fun for families and for the kids as well. So you'll learn about fire prevention and emergency preparedness, see fire equipment, and see trucks of all types, including the police trucks, and also looks like some BBW trucks as well. So there will be refreshments provided. Our location is 2625 Kniff Street, Hamtramck, Michigan.
What is it? I'm sorry.
It is going to be on September 28th. Sunday, September 28th, from noon until 2:00 PM.
Alright. Any more announcements?
Cancelled earlier this year because I've been a grant from the National League of Cities that CED applied for with Prosperous Detroit, one of our program partners that does a lot of work helping small businesses. And we're happy to announce that the applications for loans for small businesses either owned by Hamtramck residents or businesses that operate in Hamtramck are available with 0% interest and zero fees. That's what the grant money went towards is so we could design a program with them to help provide accessible small dollar financing. So those applications are available and I have flyers with me and we've been sharing it on city social media. I'll leave them in the hallway if anyone would like to take one with them. The applications are submitted directly to Prosperous, who's our contractor and partner in this. And the grant needs us to award all of the loans. We're hoping to award about 25 of them by the end of this calendar year. So hoping that folks who are interested jump on this and get involved.
Alright. Next is proclamation, recognitions, and presentations. And we have the first one, MNI Revolution, September 26th. Then we have Fire Prevention Week. And then the last one, Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We don't need to read them, but they are posted on the agenda. And next is the additions and additions. Do we have any additions or additions?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Hassan, go ahead.
I'd like to add one resolution under the new business. It should be D. like a dog, 2025-116, approving site plan for 8760 Zosokempo, whose resolution previously was here, never was second. Exactly same thing, I don't have the resolution.
I second. Alright, so that would be D.
Yep.
Approve, approving site plan of the address mentioned. So we need to motion to approve the new agenda.
Alright, so let's vote on
Let's vote on adding the new resolution.
So this is approving the site plan of the new resolution on 8760 Zosokempo. We got Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Nahmud?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Fari?
Yes.
Alright.
Alright, so
Oh, Councilman Sumei, I'm sorry.
No.
And we don't need Councilman Musa, he's not here, right?
Mr. Joe?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to add another, like a closed session.
Garburino versus Hamtramck.
Hamtramck plus city business.
Second. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you. So now we have two added resolutions on the agenda and we need to motion to approve the new agenda.
I motion.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
No objections, no sir. Thank you. So we can have a debate. New amended agenda approved. And we move to public comments section, please.
Alright, so I got one email. And then the rest of them are here. So this is, "I, Shannon Powers, am submitting this statement for public comment regarding the continual issues that are disrupting quality of life for the residents living around Trixie's Bar, even fearing retaliation. I have lived my life, I lived in my home my entire life. In the last 50-plus years, this location has always been a bar, but I have never encountered issues with noise from any of them at a level that can be heard inside my home until the last four or five years. I do not live directly next door or behind, I am a few houses away. Even walking around the neighborhood, some of their events can be heard a couple of blocks away. I expect some level of noise because it is a bar. I do not expect to hide in my home in an attempt to get away from the live bands and DJs they host on their outdoor patio. There have been occasions where the noise level is so high I have to move my friends and family indoors just to have a conversation because we cannot hear each other. In addition, there is also excessive profanity. There are children in the neighborhood that are no longer allowed outside. I have placed several calls to the police department regarding this matter. The dispatch officers don't seem to understand what the ordinance is. I am told conflicting information. I am told there is nothing that can be done because there is no ordinance between 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM. When I mention profanity, I am told there is nothing that can they do because it is free speech. I have called about noise after 1:00 AM and have been told a car was set by and they can assure me the location is closed when in fact they are not. I have watched officers drive by with their windows rolled up, never slowing to see if there are any validity to those complaints. Today I attempt to file a normal complaint with the department. As was I told, I can only make the complaint when it is happening. I have had issues with the customer blocking my driveway. When I asked what I can do in an effort to prevent this, it was suggested I hang a no parking sign. I purchased and installed the sign and it did nothing to slow or prevent the parking issues. I then added a second no parking sign and please do not block driveway sign and that has still not been effective. When the police are called and arrive, with the exception of one instance, they always go get the person from the bar and have them move their car. A neighbor on the corner of Carport and McKay was recently ticketed for parking too close to the corner by a police officer. Why would they not afford the courtesy of a knock on the door and ask to move their car? I don't want this bar shut down. I want them to move the live music and amplified sound back indoors. I want them to conduct the business on their own property while not infringing on the rights of the neighborhood around them. I hope we are able to see this through to a suitable resolution for everyone involved." Thank you for your time. That's from Shannon Powers. Alright, and then our next public comment we have.
I want comment. We do have the noise ordinance.
Yeah, I'm aware of it and I'm already addressing it.
Yep, noise ordinance is very clear.
The problem being addressed by the police.
Councilman Hassan lives nearby, so maybe he hears that too.
Alright, so first up we have is Ibrahim again.
Councilman Mayor. It's not working.
We can hear you like that. Can I record him from hearing me?
Is it going?
No, it's not.
Nothing?
Nothing on this one either.
Maybe all of these shut down?
Yeah, they probably all connected and they had it on earlier and so the battery is probably low.
Someone recording here. Good evening, Mayor Council. Today I just want to speak about this Friday. There's an event for the 26th of September. The event will start on Circus and Rube, between Moose and Rube in Detroit. It goes to Balio. After that, lunch at Azal Hall. And after that, we're going to Yezan Hall. That's Friday. Second thing, I want to congratulate Saudi Arabia and the Kingdom and the King and Crown Prince on their Revolutionary Day, the national day today. And also my condolences to the Grand Mufti of Chairman of the Council of the Senior Scholar Sheikh Abdulaziz bin Abdullah al Sheikh, who passed away today. Nothing else to say and God bless you all.
Alright, next up we have Timothy Price.
Castle Mayor, I just wanted to thank you and welcome you and invite you to the 15th Annual Hamtramck Neighborhood Arts Festival. Saturday, October 4th is going to go throughout the city. We've partnered with the EBA and they're a sponsor again, so we're partnering with the Night Market, going to exemplify that. We are actually helping program the music there. We have an artist that's been in the hill, Coming Back Rafiq, which is an experimental Middle Eastern artist. So take advantage, come see him. And we're actually going to be hopped out of the new passenger center, recovery center that moved from Kniff over next door to the Foley warehouse. We doubled our size and so we'll be based out of there. We actually are adding an art gallery element, so come check it out and look forward to seeing you. Any information, just hit me up. Thanks again for all your support and help in the cultural area.
Thank you.
Alright, next up we got Mark Kay.
There's a Mark Corey. Corey, okay.
Corey, I just wanted to make sure.
There is a Mark Kay, he used to work for the city, so I wanted to be mixed up with him. Good evening. Couple points, I just want to note on your consent, jet, invoice register, preview expenses. The cover sheet still says that it approved by Max Carbarino. They don't ever took that off, it's been the last several months. So please make that correction, okay? And congratulations, he's $109,000 up for approval today. His firm does, and I want to congratulate him on that approval.
You won the pride flag case.
Yeah, you did. So hey, well deserved. Okay. But I just want to mention the historical site for Hamtramck. They're selling these for $10 apiece, I bought one over the festival, okay? They're pretty, it has the launch would like to, "I love Hamtramck." And also they're selling these buttons, they actually lower the price for $2. I paid $3 a few years ago. So it raises funds for the historical society, so you know how to do that. Additionally, I just like to point out for the city here, I would like to indicate that, first of all, my hat. I got all these comments, that's hat. This is, that was given me by the Trump's ambassador to Fiji for Ambassador Joe Shala gave me this. It says, "Make my God brand again," the Michigan Republican Party. So and I just want to say for the mayor, I wish him good luck in getting approved. Mr. Bazid went to the Senate hearing with flying colors. Of course, he lived a lot, and I have to tell him anything about, you know, how bad the Israeli Defense Forces is. He used to live right on the border, his house, I used to hide as a kid underneath the stairwell, they bombed his house, okay? So I have to tell him that it's dangerous up there, okay? So he's going to be the new ambassador to Tunisia, hopefully. I think he's sailed through everything and hopefully he will get it too. The Slav people don't want it. He's the first member of Trump administration to support BDS. So we've got to enjoy that unique distinction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, next up we got Shakir Siddiq.
Yes. Thank you. Good to see you, Mayor. We missed you a few weeks. We thought you were well. This time I wrote my statement, I made a comment. I would like, Honorable Mayor, on all councilmen, your attention, please. The city of Hamtramck has been raising allegations of election fraud in Hamtramck. Let me be clear. Using these allegations as a tool of intimidation is unacceptable, unlawful, and a direct attack on our democracy. Certain city officials have overstepped every ethical and legal boundary in their attempt to control the city. The truth can only be determined in a code of law. Those who abuse power will be held accountable. Citizens, voters, and elected representative have been deliberately targeted. Charges have been manufactured, residents intimidated into false testimony, and council members pitted against one another in a campaign designed to force resignations or suspensions. This is not politics. This is an assault on our community and our democratic rights. Councilman Mohammed Hassan was personally investigated by a private investigator in an attempt to fabricate charges. Their citizens been offered to give testimony again, Mohammed Hassan, just to fulfill what they want to do. There's been offer to some of us if we can help frame Councilman Sumari. We have the evidence, they're very clear and recorded. Some officials thinks the immigrants, the living in Hamtramck, they're stupid. What they know? You cannot underestimate anybody. Honorable Mayor, we are proud of you about the things you have done. We are requesting, maybe I'll need 30 seconds more, please allow me. You need to know that Councilman Sedman was openly threatened. Comply with demands or face criminal prosecutions. You know those threats were real. And we have the evidence of the threat. He's been threatened that he will never become an attorney if you don't listen to this. Look, he's been charged. Even more alarm, I Shakiruddin Sadek come here to let you know the Hamtramck Police Department has been weaponized against the community. It is sworn to protect. This abuse of power has shown fear, division, and mistrust throughout the city. City health does not belong to these officials, it belongs to the people of Hamtramck. These individuals are public servants, not rulers. They must be held accountable. Any attempt to silence our voters or suppress participation will be met with the full force of legal and civil remedies. I would also like to inform you, Mr. Mayor, while you are gone. We, the community of Hamtramck, have formally requested that the Michigan Attorney General Dana Nassel, the Department of Civil Rights, and Federal Bureau of Investigation to look at this matter and open a full investigation. I come before you to let you know that we do have positive response. I'm requesting you, the mayor and the cabinet, to open an independent investigation on this matter. So the people of Hamtramck knows that we don't have to go outside the city. We can get our justice from you gentlemen. Those who break the law and abuse their authority will be exposed, held accountable, and prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law. And this statement comes from the community, citizens. Citizens are the most powerful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, May I? Mr. Shakiruddin Sadek, a smart community leader, businessman, and helpful man for the community and a strong voice. Just want to let everybody know. Thank you.
Next up, Yahya Muhammad Qasim.
Mayor, Councilman, everybody. Salaam alaikum. My issue is they fixed the alley between Goodson and Roosevelt. They damaged the property. I reached out to Mr. Rifa'i, he told me to talk to John. I came and spoke with John, he said somebody will reach out to you. I waited a week, 10 days, nobody did. Called John again. He, no, nothing happens. I reached out to the company itself. Now, month and a half later, still nothing happens. I cannot even take the trash can out because of the gap between my property and the new concrete. So I don't know what to say. I spoke with Mr. Sumei today, he said he doesn't like the job they're doing. There is another citizens that complained to him about this. What could be done?
Have they finished the alley or not?
Three weeks ago.
So they finished the alley, but the gap is still there?
The gap is still there. The fence is rolled to the tree so it cannot fall. And they move a slope, a whole slope of my property from the inside because they were trying to cut it, they couldn't. So they use the big machine to move it, so they move it about almost 10 feet slow inside my property. I sent pictures to Khalil. Now, a month and a half later, nothing happens.
Mr. Chair? John is here, if he could stand up and address this. I spoke to you about that. He also came to tell you. So and I noticed that we're having these issues that these companies, whenever they do work, they're not repairing with the damage that they're doing. What's the issue?
No, I did discuss this with Charles, you see in this lab. I don't know if Charles has talked to him.
He talked to me 28 days ago.
Yeah, so we get all this through all the alleys. They'll go through first, there's some that may be a little bit different from us where people say we damaged them. They got to go through the video because we video everything before the alley started to confirm that what the resident is saying is truly what happened. On his, I seen his pictures. His slab was poured in the yard, it kept on continuing through. So when they actually tore out the alley, it actually moved his slab. And that is going to be fixed by hand and say.
But why would I have to wait for that company to finish the whole project and come and finish my property? How am I going to take my trash?
I don't know about trash. I don't, I talked to Charles about it and Charles said that he would take care of it, so.
I already talked to Tiffany, she said she's the project manager.
Yeah, Tiffany and Charles both.
Yeah, I sent her pictures a week ago and I haven't heard from anybody. Why would they have for them until they finish their project to come back and finish my property? So now what if there is a storm and the fence will come down?
If we can get this done, work, also, I don't know, it's the same company on Longken. They destroyed the fence, the land that's owned by the mosque. So they destroyed the fence. So also that needs to be repaired. So I agree, you know, sometimes I agree with him that we're doing the work. You're damaging my property, so why are you not repairing it on the right time? So why I have to wait until the whole alley is being addressed and then you will fix mine? Why you have to wait until?
I didn't look at the construction schedule on what they have worked out with, any of the repairs or touch ups. They may not be done, I mean, local repair would be done. But I highly doubt it's been finalized out because we have to walk the alley before we pay on it to address any concerns or open problems with it. So you may think it's done, but it's probably not finalized.
It's not my issue if it's done or not. I told you, I have, sir, sir, I have to go on the sidewalk all the way to the alley to put the trash can in the alley. Because I cannot put the trash can.
Just give their address to the city manager and you reach out to Hennessy and they have to prioritize this. Last year, there was an issue on, damn, for same thing. They left the hole and somebody at night fell in that hole. And he could have sued the city, but luckily we did it. So we don't want this to happen because they kept it open for a whole year and they don't care about the safety of the people or so. So this has to be prioritized.
But, Mr. Mayor, the company was there, the heavy equipment was there. The job was done, they could have just asked for access to my premises. I would have had them, they would have done it on the same day. They poured the concrete in the alley. Why would I have to wait a month and a half for them? And she told me.
I'll talk to her tomorrow.
No, she told me, she told me they are going to look at it. I talked to him a month ago.
Give the city manager your phone number and then we'll go from there.
And then follow up with that.
It's 2955 Goodson.
Next. We got Wahid Abet.
Muhammad Qasim.
Actually, it's my first time to be here, guys. Just, we've been insulted with the water bills. I feel like we're living in, I don't know where. I work with a lot of people out of this city. They're paying like $40 a month or 50. We're paying 100, now we're paying $200 for just water, which is, this should be the cheapest thing in this world. I don't know why, why they increase that water bill every time? I mean, we have, we have a lot of things to do, guys. We don't have only the water bill. Who did increase this bill? Why? When? And are you approving these, guys? We trust on you to help residents. This is my words and I wish you can do something about this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't think the city council did anything about the water, but are there any updates, Mr. Acting City Manager from the water company? What's going on? Because I noticed that increase on my water bill too. Is there any updates? Because we didn't do anything as a government, we didn't approve anything.
The water bill was approved as part of the increase in the budget. And the rates were all mentioned on the fee schedule for all the different types of water lines. Last year, for this year, we had like 10% increase from GLEVA just on the water charges that we buy. Because we buy water from GLEVA and then all the waste that goes is treated by GLEVA and they charge for that. So there was an increase from GLEVA. On top of that, all the projects that we are doing in the water with replacement of lead service lines, with replacement of the water mains and the sewer projects, some of that money also comes through the water and sewer fund. So all those costs are part of that increase.
But I remember last year when we approved the sewer project, that was the, you know, we said that it would be increased like $10 or so on the water, but that was like a year and a half ago, I think. I mean, why, why does it keep updating and increasing?
Because every, every year is part of the process. GLEVA announces new rates every year. In fact, for 2026, 2027, they start their process of engaging with the community from November and until April, when their board finalizes the numbers and they give us the final numbers. And we do our own water and sewer model. And in that model, we plug in their rates, plus we plug in all the projects that we have to do to take care of the water and sewer projects. And those costs are plugged in there.
So does this happen to other communities?
Every community, every community, that's how it works. Because they work with all the community, not just us. And that's how I live in, Newfield has, my bill has gone up.
Mr. Chair? There's a couple of things, you can do. There's a water bill. Whatever we expend money to buy the water, it's more money we are creating. And it's set aside somewhere to put the water fund. So that's why that proposal, I did a lot of time about that. And also, buzzet session is how important now you see. Okay, for 15 years buzzet session, like MMLA, we go there, the guy fast works and you need the buzzet to study. How many elected official understand that one? So that is the other thing. So we'll, we'll talk all those things in like secretary right now. Yeah, I'm paying over $400 and nobody. This is, we'll talk.
Mr. Chair? Also my bills is high also, but I know we have, what, $9 million? Water source, right? So I know GLEVA, we buy the water from GLEVA and its cost, they increase. But there's other fees that the city put.
Right, that's what I'm telling.
I know, but we have enough money for us to fix that.
So what we do is we are putting in all the grants that we get as part of that model. If those grants money were not available, the water bills would have gone up several times. You know, so that's because you have to do these projects. And these projects are costing us significant amount of money.
So from what you're stating that we have to put the money in first until we get the grants?
It's always the case. No, and but the grant money is accounted for in the increase.
Subsequent.
It's already, you know, built into that model. And but the projects that we're doing is more than what we are getting the grants for.
So if we get some grants to cover the project 100%, then we have, we can.
Right, so that doesn't affect the cost. But we are doing a lot more projects than the actual grants we're getting. And we, what we try to do is we try to minimize the increase as much as possible by spreading the model over next 20 years. So that we have a gradual increase instead of going, let's say 100% up one year and then down, you know, 50% and 100% and. So we try to do a gradual increase over the years.
Mr. Mayor, I think you have a key question or my question too. If you get more grant money, are you looking for any grant money or starting?
We're constantly looking for more grant money. Mayor is aware of it. We are constantly, like last year, we did not. We are constantly, like last year, we did not qualify for some of the grants. Uh, you know, and we didn't get that, those grants.
But he still have a... What makes us qualify though?
It, they have a matrix of a number of...
And also, you have to know how to write the, uh, sum of that.
Right, no, we have a, we have a good grant writer. But, you know, uh, some of the times we, we don't qualify. We have been getting a lot of grants from the state on some of the water projects, on the lead service line projects. So, you know, they have to give the money to all the cities.
So, if you get more grant money, you have chances to be, water bills go down or not?
No. The che- the thing is, you're going to, you're going to address...
You explained already.
Right, you're going to address the problems faster. The city is a hundred-year-old city. The infrastructure, all the sewer lines, the water lines are a hundred years old. They have to be replaced.
So, just to, Mr. Chair, just to make it clear to the citizens and residents of the city of Hamtramck, the reason that the city put a raise in the bill is because our source system is kind of old and needs to be repaired.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And also, mainland breakdown of water, all those comes to the area. So, so if you guys see anywhere the water may break down right away, call. Sometimes our police department cannot catch it.
Like, like for example, last year, our, uh, we had forty-five percent water loss. That was a huge loss because we had a lot of water breakages because of the old infrastructure. So, all of that gets counted into the year before, two years before that, our water loss was only eight, nine percent, ten percent. Yeah, and that, that was very good. But once you have, you know, a old infrastructure in place, if, you know, these lines break down, then you lose water underground. And at time, that underground loss, you cannot do with, uh, measure out because, you know, that's just flowing through the sewers at times, you know.
Can, can I request that when you guys send the water bills, I guess have the weekly or monthly newsletter, to add one page, explain in Arabic, Benga, and English, what's the reason of this increase? So, they could understand that what's the reasons?
So, so one of the things that you can see is that we are doing a lot of projects in the city. A lot of, uh, the...
We know, but they don't know, is what I'm saying.
Well, the residents see it happening.
But I'm saying if you guys could explain, because they don't know why the...
Right, Chris, and we will, we will...
I did, I did put a note on the water bills.
Yeah, you do, a lot of people does.
All right, well, hopefully, we can get some...
One, one thing that wasn't mentioned is we also had a lawsuit that required us to make changes to the water system. Or else the lawsuit would have costed us a lot more, so we have to...
So, so, so we have to actively address the flooding and the water issue. And I think for the things that we are doing in the city in the last couple of years, our flooding issues have drastically reduced, uh, even though we have had some heavy rains.
So, so you, you both live in different cities. How, how's the water bill in your city?
Absurd.
Very high. Because our residents thinks it's only in Hamtramck.
I, I, I live in a condo. I don't even have a lawn. My water bill is five hundred to five fifty for three months.
For five fifty, three months?
It's more expensive than life.
No, because, because the reason is I don't have a lawn. I don't order my lawns. And, you know, there's, it's a condo. It's a small condo that I live in.
Excuse me, no, no discussion at this time for...
And I think we were doing public comments, right?
Yeah, yeah.
No, it's...
So much.
All right, next up, we got Abdallah Aziz Jova.
Salaam alaikum. Hello, everyone. Uh, my name is Abdallah Aziz Jova. And I'd like to, uh, congratulate the Yemeni community in the U.S. for the Revolution Days, September twenty-sixth, which is, uh, added up sixty-three years since we have that revolution for Yemen. And, uh, that's, uh, make our, self, our nation proud of what our revolution come up with, uh, education, uh, all that good stuff. And I'd like to add that in Arabic.
Next up, we have Nasser.
I'll skip to you.
All right, and then we have Latanya Hatcher.
Hello, everyone. Um, I'm a homeowner. I live on Jacob. And ever since they did the project, fixing the streets, whatever they were doing underground, they had totally messed up our whole street. From Connet all the way to Joseph Campo. The ride from Connet all the way to Joseph Campo is very uncomfortable. It's a bumpy ride. It has holes in the streets. So, this is what I paid my cost, fifty dollars for, to live on a bumpy street. I've been on Jacob for eleven years. And my street has never been like that. They fixed it, then they called itself coming back, moved it out. It's still bumpy. It's still messed up. It's like you riding on a roller coaster. So, what can y'all do as city council to fix our street again?
John, any plans for Jacob?
Yeah, that goes for any streets with the lead service line replacement. They go back and they patch with concrete, you know, up to already a deteriorated road. Those streets are then put on our capital improvement plan for our road resurfacing projects, um, in order as we do them. So, road funds, we do not get much, as you know, grant money for roads. It comes out of the general fund that we're gonna do it or we have to just deal with what we can, what we work with. So, when they go through and do the lead service lines, you're cutting a bunch of squares, so that's probably what she's referring to.
Yeah, there's a bunch of squares, yes.
She's hitting the, she's hitting the patches.
I'm hitting the patches and I'm hitting the holes that wasn't there before they came and did the work on the street.
Yeah, so there gonna be, a lot of times when they break away and cut, you'll have a dip before we try to go through and patch what we can out of. But sometimes it's not as deep enough to put the pothole material in it and it just pops right back out in, in a couple of weeks. Uh, but we have quite a few streets like that, unfortunately.
Now, now, I've seen a couple of streets they have done. It looked way better than our street, way smoother than our street. Not only that, my sidewalk, brand new, brand new sidewalk. It's all scratched up. Even a little square sidewalk by the curb where the grass is, that's cracked up, it's broke. I've been eleven years and none of that has been like that period.
Mr. Chair, I did that just to John and Max when he was, you know, city manager that Jacob was a big issue. And somehow, you guys send another company to look into it, but haven't done nothing to it. And this is the issue that we having, that they're redoing the service lines and then start on patching the, the hole that they make level to the, the way it used to be. We wouldn't have these issue.
Well, the problem is the street isn't level all the way around.
So, don't tell me because the way it's patched, it comes out. If it's been done right, you know, where, where I live in my area, my street is Detroit, and they do patching. But it looks exactly, it doesn't really happen. But what our work or the company, that, that doesn't support, it seems like, okay, they're patching it, but it's still like a bumpy road, like she said. And then she has to go to a mechanic so she can fit her axle or something. And this is an issue that's continuing. And this is, it's either the company's not doing what they're supposed to be doing or we need to find another company. While we're continuing with this, with this company. This is the issue since day one with the service line.
Now, I have a concern, y'all on Jacob doing the alley now at this time. Once again, when you come out the driveway, when I come out my, my garage, the little flat part, of course, they had to tear it up. Now, I'm gonna be concerned in another two more weeks is my, the curved part, is it gonna be put back right? Is it gonna be smoothed back right? Okay, I can, I got thirty, I got you. But once, but once it gets done, if it's not fixed right, I'd like it for it to be fixed. I pay taxes on my house. And I'm a homeowner. And I want my house back the way that it is. And I would like to live on a nice, smooth street. We pay taxes. Where's my tax dollars going?
If you don't mind, if you give your address to our acting city manager so they can check on, on the slab that they're, the city, or the company.
Okay, but once this alley gets done, then I have to see if it's gonna be done right because it's, it's tore up, all of it is torn up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we can try and, and do some of those holes in Jacob, our side. Just at least to make it as, as good as possible as it used to be, until we get to the whole project, fixing the... Okay, thank you.
Nine eight.
That's all for public comments.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll move to the consent agenda. This is approved with a single motion with no discussion. And we have, uh, approval of minutes from September ninth, two thousand twenty-five, regular city council meeting. B, approval of invoice registered dating since September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five. C, approval of pre-approval expenditure dating since September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five. D, resolution twenty twenty-five dash one eleven approving site plan for one one six one one Joseph Campo. E, resolution twenty twenty-five dash one twelve approving site plan for nine five zero three Joseph Campo. Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Objections?
No, sir.
Thank you. We move now to the new business. And we have the first resolution, twenty twenty-five dash one thirteen authorizing execution of participation agreement in Burdu Pharma-Saklar opioid settlement and acceptance of settlement funds. Motion?
Second.
You taking this?
Yeah.
Um, so we've been receiving and paying attention to requests from the Michigan Attorney General's office asking municipalities to sign on and participate in a settlement with Purdue Pharma. This is the first of two of these resolutions that you have in front of you tonight. Um, we don't have a set dollar amount that will be available to the city as a participant. However, attached to the agenda item is a large spreadsheet with different, small fractions of percentages of this overall larger pot of money. Um, so essentially, your vote includes Hamtramck into that group so that we would be eligible to receive some dollar amount in the future, um, which is supposed to be dedicated to further work in terms of drug abuse and prevent, drug abuse prevention. Um, so this is due to the Attorney General's office by the thirtieth of this month, which is why we're getting ahead of it and bringing it to you for a vote today.
All right. Any questions, any feelings, questions? Did we wait for Hassan to come back?
Yeah.
All right. We can go with the vote.
Councilman Al Sumeri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Sadman?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Five?
Yes.
All right, so, resolution passed. And, uh, we'll move to the next one. We have resolution twenty twenty-five dash one fourteen authorizing execution of participation agreement in the secondary manufacturers opioid settlement and acceptance of settlement funds. Motion?
Second.
So, Councilor, this agenda item is related to, but separate from what you just voted on because we have a group of manufacturers that are involved in a similar set of lawsuits. And in a similar fashion, the A.G. is looking for cities to sign on and be participants in this settlement as well.
All right. All right.
Councilman Sadman?
Yes.
Councilman Five?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Al Sumeri?
Ah, yes.
We should be everybody.
All right.
Councilman Hassan just walked in, but he didn't hear what it was about, so we don't have to vote.
Maybe we can vote on this one?
It's accepting settlement funds.
No, good, yeah.
Potentially, yeah.
Yes.
All right, so we have the next one, resolution twenty twenty-five dash one fifteen, approving the newly negotiated agreement between City of Hamtramck and C O A M. Motion?
Second. What does C O A M stand for?
Uh, so I think the acting city manager will explain to us because we need to know more details about this in the future.
All right, so command officer, we have two unions in the police. Uh, one is the P O M, which is the Police Officers, uh, Union, and then the other is the Command Union. Both these, uh, contracts are interlinked in terms of monetary remuneration. So, when we approve the P O M contract, which we did last year, uh, all the monetary-related raises and everything for P O M uh, is linked to C O A M as well. So, whatever we approve there, also got approved for C O A M. This, but this particular contract, uh, but because they are two separate unions, they're two separate contracts. Uh, so this particular contract, which will be from July one of this year till twenty twenty-nine, uh, October or September, this basically addresses some of the command structure. Uh, it doesn't have, uh, financial implications other than, uh, one of the, uh, things that we have in there, which is a thousand dollars as a matching number for their retirement fund, which is, if they put in a thousand, then the city will match a thousand dollars uh, for the year. So, this, you're looking at eleven thousand, uh, you know...
Per person?
Uh, no, yeah, thousand dollar per person. There are eleven people, so eleven thousand for the year.
If they contribute that.
I know, I hope they want to.
Yeah, so, so that, that is the only impact. The, what, the command structure is basically addressing some of the language issues in the contract and the overall structure of the, uh, contract. So, for example, currently, uh, in the police, you have the police chief, then you have the deputy chief, then you have the lieutenant, then you have sergeant tier one, and then sergeant tier two. So, based on this new contract, you would have the police chief, the deputy chief, the lieutenant would be, would become the captain. So, basically, it's a name change. Uh, they will remain at their current salary levels. Uh, there's no change of salary. So, lieutenant would become a captain. Uh, tier one sergeant would become lieutenant and tier two sergeant will become just sergeants. So, this, so we were having issues within, because of the two-tier sergeants, uh, there were issues in there. So, what we tried to do is that without creating any financial burden of the city, we tried to address the structure in a sense that there are no conflicts between the different tiers.
So, what is the financial impact?
The financial impact is that eleven thousand.
That's all?
That's all.
Well, the previously, we don't have any deputy police chief.
Right.
So, how we got it there on here?
That, that police, uh, was added last year when, as part of the overall contract, that deputy chief position was added. When I think we, we hired the chief, that is, that was the, that was done at that...
Part of the rules we can't just...
No, you need a good explanation. I know exactly, that's why. I have no explanation come from you.
Uh, Zach, my partner, sorry.
And we have to continue there.
Right, right, yes.
I know, I know.
Zach, my partner did participate in these negotiations and...
Only one request though. Any contact, elected official has to be there. We can not, it was the previous practice. To contact, elected official was not there. And from the city manager, previous, uh, to the, to the explanation kinds of lie, and we find out when the manager left. So, we do work, we trust the, our city officers, our city employees. But end of the day, we have to hear all those things. After somebody left, that is not good for no one. But so, any contact come, offer the elected official, anybody wanna go there, they can go and they can watch. Uh, just one, uh, example, Katie Gordon. Just one example, Katie Gordon, every single contact she goes sit over there. That's why other elected official, know somebody from elected official's side is already there. So one of the contact I've been doing, two thousand two, as an operation manager, I had to be there. But if you're W side, that's a, I cannot be there. But our company lawyer said he is gonna be here because he is the one approving all those things. So something, that's why trust come back and everybody feel good. Even the eleven thousand dollar, I know about it because I do have that system.
Yeah.
Okay?
So that's eleven, eleven thousand a year.
A year, actually.
Five eleven employees.
Correct. If I can say something as the president of the union, you know, negotiations, we've been expired in July. We're very good with the city going both ways and, you know, the agreement, we knew financially, we didn't ask for any raises, we just wanted to restructure, you know, as deputy chief, the command structure made more clear, and I think it addressed that without, you know, raises, we laterally moved people. So I think it's, the union's happy with it, and I think the city's happy with it.
Because I mean, that was one of the first conditions I put to the union. I said, whatever we're gonna do, I'm not gonna accept any financial information.
We can have this issue up for as soon as when we have a new chief.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. This is a separate, this has nothing to do with.
And we have it.
No, the thing is that this agreement really doesn't matter whether you have a chief or a new chief comes in, it doesn't really matter.
Doesn't change anything.
Doesn't really change much, other than like a tweak to the command structure.
It doesn't change anything.
And adds this thousand-dollar thing that he's talking about.
Just on the debate.
Yeah, and even if the chief comes in, it will not make any difference in terms of the structure itself.
It's just eliminating two tiers of sergeants, which makes some clutter in the.
All right, and like, you know, we have a lot of issues in the police department that we need to address. I mean, I think everybody knew about them, there's some kind of law morale that needs to be addressed, we have to talk about that. I mean, we can't let it go after it made national news. We have some very good officers that we respect and we love, we appreciate all of you. But the kind of behavior that we heard from some, I mean, needs to be addressed. We cannot continue the same, you know, behavior that we heard about from some officers, including, you know, including the morale, the ethics, the work ethics, you know, the stuff about overtime and a lot of stuff, and, you know, the city resources, the taxpayer money is not there for, for people to abuse. So we need to address those, and I think you will help us.
Hundred percent, we've already been working on some of those issues, and obviously, some of it, officers not hearing.
And then I'll put in the example. The situation, it was watched and what we have right now, we have to bring the machine and state to grow the diversity training we have done. And also, me and Anamiya take personally to the police chief, to the closed-door room as elected official, given the criteria. And that's it. If we see one more thing misbehave, or like this, like that, it is our tax money, Mr. Chief, please fix it, and he willing to fix it.
No.
Can we wait one second, just so I could, the live feed ended. I don't want you guys to keep talking, and. Give me one second.
Do you have anything to add, Bill?
Sorry about that. No, I stopped shooting.
Here is the recording, so I think we can.
The situation is continued.
Yeah, here's the recording.
Who is the?
Channel nineteen. Live view.
But it's not live.
Definitely, you know what?
They're rooted there anyway.
But you can see it for two weeks afterward.
Well, what happened? You timed it?
No, it just, it just stopped working. They said it was freezing, was freezing, and then it just stopped working, and then I'm trying to restart it.
Open a, close, open door, open.
Where the guys were, need you taking life, they love?
Yes. Allah, Allah. Come so we're like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought it was part of the.
We need to know.
He has all of them. Share in the Hamtramck shoe.
Jan is, is, is.
Hamtramck. Well, I think we can go ahead and, if there's no more discussion, we can vote.
All right.
Resolution twenty-two-five dash one fifteen.
All right. Councilman Sadman?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Osmeri?
Ah, no.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Fai?
Yes.
All right, that should be enough for approval.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. The next one is the added resolution of, would be a resolution twenty-two-five dash one sixteen.
Eight-seven-six-zero.
Approving the site plan, eight-seven-six-zero.
Joseph Compo.
Joseph Compo.
Motion? Second.
All right, so we need to discuss this and.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
With respect to everybody, this reservation came month ago, and we did not brought it upfront. We wanna hear from some community members, and also from the owner's side. Of course, a city don't like to lose the revenue. With respect, we don't like to lose our cultural morale or anything. I spoke to the owner, he told me exactly same moral. We're gonna bring it to the other world when everything finished. He already contacted with the guy who did this moral, and it was the cost around twenty thousand dollar. He agreed to give majority of them, and rest of the money willingly, we tried to donate, myself also, our community, our businessmen, who will put it together. We wanna make sure same moral is gonna be the, by the other world. And the owner said, I don't have no issue with that, and it will be first priority from my side. I, then he convinced me. And also, this law, right now, maybe I'm getting only five hundred dollar tax. If it is developed, either business or residential or whatever, it's gonna be over five thousand and maybe more than that. So also, the area gonna looks very good. I just went to the Shiva restaurant the other day, its development is so beautiful. So side by side, if the building grow up, build up, bring the beauty, bring the more business, I think it's good for Hamtramck. Yemen Cafe, they are, we never go there twenty years ago. As soon as they open, now one-thirty, one o'clock, everybody over there go eat. Our all young generation, I don't see on the Conant Avenue, they all go there, spend the money. And that area, part of the ghost town, now it looks like it's the real downtown. So those kinds of deployment from the community, I feel is positive and good thing. And I didn't see anybody here to come complain about that. Some of the residents saying, oh, we're not gonna see anymore moral maybe. No, no, you're gonna see that, and, and we're gonna approve with that contact, make sure he has to bring same scenario what we have right now. So that's the why. I'm, 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 I like to approve it, and I will approve. It's my.
I was asked for my opinion last time, so I wanna just explain to you, I started where I spoken with Mr. De Morris numerous times, and essentially, there's a master agreement here that a number of parties were a party too, and I'm not gonna get into the weeds of it, but basically, what was agreed upon was that the city would provide the, the property owners with two properties and some other, some other things in order to induce the agreement for the mural to remain. And so now, I guess, part of that is being addressed here, but, so their offer was either to recreate the mural or to return the two properties, and so I'm not sure which one is, if Mr. De Morris wants to speak to what is exactly being offered, I'd like to know.
Yeah, so, well, we've considered a number of alternatives, but what we are proposing now is that the original artist who's in Chile has been contacted, he's agreed to come back and paint a mural. It may be the identical mural, or he may decide to, to update it, but it would be the same artist, and, but the, the plan would be to put it on the wall of the Yemen Cafe for the reason that there's a park area there now, and that people, I think, would be able to enjoy the mural more. But we're also open to, you know, if the council feels strongly to having the mural on the, the same facing wall as it is now. But the, the idea is that the whole goal of this master agreement was to save the mural for, at least for a period of time. It wasn't permanent, it was for a number of years, but we're now proposing that we'd have the same artist come back and paint, paint a mural. It's not feasible to move it, but our, our clients are committed to making sure that there is a mural, at the same time allowing them to develop their property.
Mr. Attorney? So, so two things, please. One thing is, there, there is a couple of presidents who were involved in this project, and they're, they're saying that they tried to reach out to this artist, and they couldn't get a hold of him.
Yeah.
It's very difficult to get a hold of him. The second is, with the new immigration restrictions, can we, since he's from Chile, you know, South America, right? Is it possible to get him to come here?
He lives in New York.
He does? Oh, okay, I thought he's outside of.
I also have text messages between him and I can airdrop to anyone.
Okay, okay, good. I was just.
We're back live, by the way, we're back live.
So he's, he's Chilean, but, you know, it sounds like the immigration is not an issue.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
If it gets approved, I mean, this would be conditionally approved, on, on whatever you guys decide to do, so.
I think there would be, need to be another contract we can hammer out, Mr. Morris, if you wanted at that point, but, so basically, it's up to the council, the way I see it, to decide whether or not this new plan is sufficient to make up for any perceived losses from the, the previous, the master agreement. And again, not to say to table it again, but if you wanna provide us guidance as to where you want us to go with, then we can hammer out an agreement, and then I think it would be more proper to bring that agreement back to the council to approve it at the next meeting. I know nobody wants to do that, but it is the proper way. I.
They have, they have the two entilat for this agreement. Figure out where we go, the two entilat. Same, same one, same one, anyone they say they're gonna be same way, it's gonna be big different. It's not gonna be same one. When you break your face, it's not gonna come back your face same.
That's true.
That's the same.
Yeah.
They have the mystery agreement for two lot. I mean, what we, what is your hope about the lots?
Yeah, so, so our client purchased those two lots, one from the city, one from Bill Meyer. They paid money for those, from recollection, about forty thousand dollars they paid for the two lots. There, there was not an agreement that required them to develop those lots. Their plan is to, at some point, do something with them, but they, they bought them, they're paying taxes on them, and, you know, the goal of this agreement all along was to preserve the mural, and we're doing that. So we're not proposing to maybe, either to change anything with the lots or to impose any additional obligations. What we're saying is, the agreement was to preserve the mural, and we've come up with a way to preserve the mural, so I think it satisfies everybody's concerns.
There was a suggestion by, I spoke to Ali, by some, some people, where they suggested that they donate a lot on the same street to Ali, and he keeps the two lots, and the city buy the lot from him, the current one, in order to protect, to maintain the mural, so we can develop the new lot that will be donated to him on the same street. Is that, I mean, Ali, we didn't have time to discuss it with him, but he can tell us to.
Yeah, I, I don't know which, which lot that is that you're talking about, but, you know, we, we have a lot that our clients have owned for quite a few years that we'd like to develop, and it's, it's, it's also close to their Yemen Cafe restaurant, so I think the, you know, our, our goal is to develop that lot that they already own rather than start trading properties back and forth.
Mr. Chair? Yes, to inform everybody that the owners of Yemen Cafe did not get these lots free, they paid for these lots. So just to get that clear, even though there was a master agreement with the city and the owner, but they purchased those lots, so they're, they consider all these lots. So about the mural, I'll put a proposal in front of you guys here today, that if we approve it today, our owners are willing to pay fully for the mural on the other side.
Are they, the.
I can just say they're.
Yeah.
They're responsible for.
What I would say is that they're agreeing to be responsible for it. They may solicit donations.
It's fine. They are responsible.
Next thing what they're saying is, in case the donations don't meet the threshold.
Well, they is agree on it.
Okay, so, so then basically, you need to do a motion to amend the current. Go ahead.
Mr. Attorney, I apologize. Anybody wanna go? I got a question. I like your discussion, we're gonna go there one. Second one, Mr. District Attorney, I, I want the same face of same side, I don't want the other side. Okay? So, like I said, that's why nobody can complain, like you're saying, if it is by the other side, by the part, people more enjoy, no. I don't want that conflict, please. I want the same face and, and the same side. Okay?
So, Mr. Attorney, it is the same.
Whatever you like.
We, we're, we're open to the, the wishes of the council on that issue.
Whatever you want, it's okay.
So it is the same artist, the art, the other one, the original Yemen morale?
Yes.
His name is, what his name is?
Uh, Jasek Fernandez.
Jasek Fernandez?
Yes, Jasek Fernandez.
Okay, the same artist, an artist.
Yes.
Okay. So usually, at, at this time, it costs over a hundred thousand, but he agreed to do it for twenty to twenty-five thousand, which is, I mean.
Mr. Ali agree with that, whatever money he.
He said he's losing nothing. I'll let to him, and resolution to.
Has it been done?
Conditionally approved.
To approve that the owners will take responsibility to paint a mural on the new building on Gutsun Street, Joseph Compo.
And.
It's fine.
Well, it's, it's a specific time.
Yeah, I think that, okay, so basically, conditional approval, and then we'll come back to you with a contract in two weeks with the, the terms.
How about, how about the lot?
That'll have to be part of the contract, will, I mean, it doesn't sound like it's part of the motion, so that would be something you'd have to tell them right now.
We just approving this one. Whatever city has a.
They have the mystery agreement, they have empty lot for this issue.
We paying for, we not get it.
I know you pay for, I know, I know you pay for. When we pay, we pay for agreement.
The agreement, you counsel.
To protect the moral, that is the agreement I said, still protecting. Still protecting the mural, bringing in front, make it, make it more nice. Okay? Twin tower building, that try to build again, they'll be modified, have more glory, more beautiful. So still we gotta go try to same way. I understand your feeling, Mr. Councilman. But we try to do something similar. In our country, not a hundred percent, but it's gonna make more than, more beauty. First time he make a mistake, second time maybe he gonna make a more beauty, more glory.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think we're necessarily saying that it's gonna be exactly the same, but the same artist, but a mural promoting and celebrating Yemen culture.
Counselor, thank you.
Maybe it could be a three D, huh? So I don't know.
Then we'll just in the contract.
I think timeframe is to chime in from CED's perspective just because we brought the original resolution for the site plan. Portions of the amendment to the master agreement or whatever contract we work out in for the discussion will address concerns about the timeframe of the mural being painted and after following development. And then also, any implications with the lots. I think that has to be separated out and discussed as a part of that.
You gonna attorney do it, whatever need to do.
Can you go ahead and vote?
But I guess I, let's see, I can clarify one point is, is I understand that the resolution is to approve the site plan conditioned on the painting of a new mural by the same artist on the same side of the building. Same side of the building.
But I don't. Painted full by your client.
Correct. But there's not anything in the resolution about them being required to do anything else like, you know, as you mentioned, you know, anything within lots that they bought.
That's up to, Councilman El-Sumir, you mentioned the lot. I don't know if anybody else is supporting it.
We're approving it the way it is on the resolution. That a new building will be built. The owners will paint, take responsibility on paint the entire.
They gonna keep going?
Counselor has the power to continue with the message agreement or not. So this body will choose and vote right now what we should decide to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go, Mr. Chair.
All right, so we have the Councilman Mahmoud.
Origin modification resolution?
Yes.
What is it? Yes.
Well, first, we're motion to modify the resolution, then we're voting on.
I have to modify it.
Yeah, good, okay.
Or if the second. I'll second. Okay, so.
The second call is done.
Okay, and everyone agrees on that? Yeah. And then move to vote on the amended resolution?
Right.
So Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman El-Sumir?
Uh, no.
Councilman Sadman?
Yes.
Councilman Farah?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
So you got that down the right way?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Good to listen, Mr. Ali. Go ahead, Bill.
Congratulations.
Thank God. Dinner today is in Yemen Cafe.
He's spending twenty-five thousand, he don't want to bury me anymore. And he paid extra attorney fees because we don't, we tabled this last time.
Thank you very much.
All right, I guess we're done, right? For the new business?
Yes.
And we move to.
Thank you very much, everyone.
All right, so then we move to the report. We have, we have that end, right? After the party. We're gonna have a closed session at ten. With the reports, well, not much to say. I just want to thank you all for coming tonight and, you know, attending the city council meeting. It's very important to hear from the residents because this kind of community engagements is very important to us to hear from the people about their concerns. And one of the most pressing issue tonight was fixing the streets and alleys, which we are trying our best and the water wells as well. I mean, it's not something that we are happy about, but we only can do so much. We have limited resources and we are trying to wisely use it to serve our community the best way we can. I have to expose to you that I've been working on some requests from the federal government for a lot of money to come. One of them is to cover the pension obligation a hundred percent. I mean, I had some promises from the White House that they will try their best to do that for us. And if we can accomplish that and get the murals covered a hundred percent, because it's right now at sixty percent covered, then we will be saving up to six million a year. That's, that's a big thing. That's gonna solve the most chronic and complicated issue for the city fund track. So if we fix that, I mean, I asked for multiple things, including infrastructure stuff and they are working on it. If I, if we can only get half of what we requested, because they seem very serious about it, that would be a historic accomplishment. And the most important one is to help solve the pension obligation thing. Then I promise you guys, if this happens, we'll fix Jacob and all the alleys and all the streets. Okay? Because we'll have some real surplus that we can use for the infrastructure. So I'm working on that. I just sent another email to the White House, to the people who are assigned to work on this project. And I will keep following up, even, even if I have to, you know, leave the city, I'll keep working on that project. So with that, I think we see a lot of improvement in the city. There's a lot of good things that's happening, fixing alleys, parks, streets, sewer system, lead pipelines. Then, I mean, things that happened over the past two, three years that never happened over the past two, three years. So, so it's, we can't fix everything at once, but we are doing great things. And I think if we can get this thing done, where we can solve the pension obligation thing, that's gonna be historic. And then the next mayor, whoever is coming, will focus on planting flowers and stuff on the street. It does not have to worry about the infrastructure. All right, so with that, I thank you again and I hand it to the, the mayor put in is not here. Actually, we have a new mayor put in. I mean, there was a coup when I wasn't here last meeting. So we have a new mayor put in. He's not here. So we move to the city council report, please.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman Hassan?
Maybe you and me, Mayor Porter make a deal. If I go one day, you don't go, you go, I go, I don't know what's happening. So thank you, everybody, to come here today and resolve the issues. How we discuss, we discuss and we can peacefully modify and make that happen together. We cannot make everybody happy, but there is something we can make. Second, right now, we have a, no manager in the city hall. We have acting manager. So there's lots of people also talking about. So I just wanna let the residents know. As very soon is gonna be posting for the city manager and also police chief. So it's coming. It's not the one we are sleeping, but we are, we are like a mayor's, mayor working to help us and we work together to make the city a better place to live here. So again, newly elected official who they're coming, I'm requesting them start from now on, maybe look at the budget things. It's very important and heart of the city to start read a department and line by line. Then more understand, you guys can have it. Then you guys can talk to the people, what you gonna do? Well, there is the one blocking you to do it. That's why you know what you can say and what you can learn. Besides of that, I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak? All right, thank you. Well, we move back to the second round of public comments, please. Ibrahim Aldeim?
Yes, good evening again, Mayor, Council. Regarding the police department, I know the state of Michigan passed a law, you can't be on the phone while you're driving. The other day, I was on Conant, coming and a police officer is on the phone, driving Conant from Kenev going towards Holbrook. So can police officers use their phones while they're driving? Second thing, I, I've been talking about this for about eleven years now and saying we need a citizens oversight committee for the police department. This would be like, like the commissions, you know, the council and the mayor with the citizens from the community and be a committee of seven or eight or nine to be oversight for the police department. And lastly, since the situation started with former police chief Tahiri, we don't feel like the police are respectful, they're not nicer. It's like, hey, you know, we got this again. It seemed that way to me. And I've been in this community for thirty-five years, been in Hamtramck since 2011. This one Hassan, everybody knows me here. And we want the police department to be more friendly. When someone comes to the police department, does a report or translate, smile, be nice, be respectful. That's all I'm saying right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Corry?
You have to put your name. Stand just here. Yes, you can.
Yes, good evening. Now that it's been mentioned. I can go? Okay. Yeah, now to mention, I'll just follow up. He said, basically, the NMACP in 2010 had put forth the notion and the proposal that we have a police oversight board in this city. And it was backed by several community leaders, the Bengalis, the Yemenis, Bill Meyer supported it, some other people support it too. And I certainly supported it. I've tried for, added for night to get this thing, to have a community initiative, dialogue in this. It's not, it goes nowhere. In fact, what's amazing, I used to go with a tab board meetings from Governor Snyder. I remember Ed Boggs is sitting right over there and we used to talk about this. And we talked, me and Bob Zola, we talked to the tab board and said, you know what? Look at all lawsuits here. One cop has led to this. One cop, Michael Stout. And I said, can you investigate this? And Ed Boggs turned over to Katrina Powell and says, I want to report all lawsuits against the city. So somebody's knew about it. But this city council, or no city's ever, ever brought anything up with me or anybody else I'm aware of to get an oversight board. Detroit, I went in seventy-three, it helped. And I forgot when I was part of that, that they passed a twenty-fifty day after some black woman was shot to death, who was mentally ill. Okay? Talked about it for decades. Finally, it was done, they passed it, it got put in. I was there when they sworn the officers that. Okay? So why we didn't hear, I don't know why. I suspect it's because of the politics, the police department has a lot pulled in the government here and people afraid to go against them, people afraid to have a counter group. But the point was, the police happened, the color Barbie protects them. So when you go make a complaint against the police, the chief or whatever, very little happens because it's all part of the same group. Okay, they're heavily protected. Cities are not protected unless they have a police board. That's why we need a police board. There's actually a non-governess organization that actually works with cities in how to form a police board, how to do it properly. So it's been done. Detroit did in nineteen seventy-three, okay? They were the first ones to have this. They had one down in Dallas. They had one, they have all, a lot of cities have them, okay? They technically need them where there's a history of lawsuits against the police department, against the city, because it never ends, because they're protected, nothing ever happens. Okay, how many cops go to prison? I can think of one guy, Meccan Ernie, right? Meccan Ernie went to prison. Okay, everybody else gets probation, it's, it's really easy. So I just want to expound on what, what Ibrahim just said. Yeah, we do need one, we need dialogue, we need to start now. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, it's very important because like at that time, Attorney, Alba and Judani would get aggressive things to make the N double SCP created in the Hamtramck district sector. And we did run a few years and after that, again, it was gone. Yes, after this, after all those things, all complaint, we might have to create one commission of the, or group to not, I'm not gonna say oversee, that communicate with the police department. That's all we have to do as soon as possible.
Thank you.
He looking for the painter.
Al-Taziz Jova.
Hello, everyone again. My name is Al-Taziz Jova. I just want to echo on the trash, trash everywhere in the city of Hamtramck, especially the businesses. Everywhere I go, I see a trash everywhere. I had businesses in almost three cities. And every business I have, they require for me to have a trash can, my own trash can. Sometime, we change it twice, every day. That trash can cause, keep all the trash inside and keep the, the street clean. If you have empty can on your hand, it drives into that can. But in Hamtramck, especially in Jerusalem, I don't see how. I don't know if there is some requirement or the business people didn't care about it. But we care about to have our city clean. We have visitor from everywhere. And I, I was Wayne State the other day and one of the professor, he said he came here to Hamtramck to eat and one of our restaurant, Yemeni food. But this impairs me to see on the front all that can, you know, trash can or stuff like that. That's one. Another thing, I appreciate Mayor Gal for what he do for our city, asking for money for the city and try to keep our fund stable for that, even if he not gonna run for next year, next election. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I go at my own cost, so.
Mr. Paul?
But one, one thing, one important thing is the trash thing. I think we need to do something about it. We just keep being distracted about other issues. But it's very important to implement some kind of ordinance or whatever to, to tell the business owners to clean the sidewalk and I think two feet of the street, there is something that we need to implement. Is that two feet?
They're responsible to clean the entire sidewalk in front of their business and two feet into the street.
Yeah, so we need to implement that. We need, you know, to start going to, you know, maybe issue some violations to those who don't. And our responsibility to add more trash cans to the street, especially in front of those businesses that are busy, restaurants and stuff, because it just makes the business looks better, attractive to customers. It's good for the business and good for the city. And like you said, we don't want people from outside to come and it's embarrassing to see some good businesses that are very functional and they do good, but they don't clean in front of their store. So that's something we should start implementing. I think we should come up with a plan to start implementing this ordinance.
Also, Mr. Mayor, DDA also part of that. So DDA should go promote those things. DDA is not only for once a year make the festival, no. Now, DDA taking some money to tax money. DDA has to also have something and also implementation from our city to clean up. It's very important.
Thank you. So the DDA, they have a limited budget, but they're doing good. I mean, cleaning the snow and other stuff, trying to beautify the street. And they are working hard to join the main street, which will enable us or give us access to bars, you know, get some grants and stuff. That's something important, yes, they, they are working on that. I'm part of the DDA and we just discussed last meeting some big projects for the future, including joining the main street where we can get some grants and stuff. And so that's, that's, I will emphasize on that in the next meeting as well. All right.
Last one, we have Latanya Hatcher. We have one more after that, I'm sorry.
I agree with the two gentlemen here. Police officers are not very nice. I've known people personally that's been locked up. They're very mean to prisoners that's locked up. They say mean things, they do mean things. Now, I'm gonna say, not all of them are mean. Some of them are. Just about a week ago, my neighbor was playing his music out loud to my daughter, called the police. They come, but they go to the neighbor house next door. I have a dog, I have a pit bull, and she's in the gate. My daughter can see what the officer is doing off her window, because her window's in the backyard. He is deliberately taking a flashlight and taunting our dog, just like deliberately taunting her on purpose. And she's like, what are you doing? He jumped, because he didn't realize she was up at the top window. And she's like, what are you taunting my dog for? What are you doing it for? You supposed to be checking the neighbor's house that we call about the complaint of the noise. Then once he get in his car, he takes and flash all his lights at my front living room window. What was the purpose of that? So, no, the officers are not nice. They're very mean. Another thing I have to say, I noticed certain stores in Hamtramck, I lived in Hamtramck when I was five, I'm 53 now. There is not a lot of stores for other cultures. It's like, it's just made for certain cultures. Like, I noticed certain stores, they open till 1, 2 o'clock, they hang out at the stores. Who, are they able to do that? They shouldn't be able to do that. They ride up and down the street, they be in the parking lot of the plaza on Joseph Campbell and Holbrook, where the grocery store is, and the donut shop is. They be in there partying, going to a donut, sitting out there having fun. That donut shop is nasty over there. Nothing but a whole bunch of old men. No, this, seriously, nothing but a bunch of old men and young girls be in there. And that's been being talked about for years, for years. When I worked at the hospital, they was talking about that donut shop.
Yeah, that one need to be cleaned.
Not just clean, it needs to be, the people need to be, excuse me, need to be looked at. Because it's nothing but a bunch of young girls in there, they be flirting with the girls, and ain't no telling what else is going on over there. There's a lot of things in Hamtramck that I see that is not, it's not right.
Counselor.
That's it. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh yeah, we have one more. Chris Tate.
Good evening, everybody. Yeah, my name's Chris Tate. I'm the director at Passenger Recovery. We were one of the two recipients of the opioid settlement funding for this year. I just wanted to give an update. We have a good working relationship with Mr. Hassan, Hamtramck Police Department. As of this week, we moved into a bigger facility because we averaged 250 people that were helping a week through support groups, through music and arts events, and we were able to hire a peer support specialist. And we could not have done that without the help of the city council and Mr. Mayor. So we just wanted to, I just wanted to stop by and give you a quick update and say thank you. We're really helping people, and we've had to actually expand our capacity to be able to do so because we're busy. So, thanks.
Good to hear. Thank you so much. All right. Okay, so we done with the second round of public comment, and we're gonna have a closed session. It's gonna be quick. And I think there's a possibility we can come back and vote on something.
Motion?
Yeah.
Second round.
Okay.
Page 41.
All right. So we will have a closed session, and then we'll get back on, like, thank you.
Good night.
All right, so we just came back from the closed session, and there's no voting. We're just gonna, motion to adjourn?
I motion, Mr. Chair.
All right, so it's 9:14, please.
All right, have a good night.
All right, thank you, everyone, and good night.